Five thirty-two or something on Thursday, September eighteenth. I'm gonna call the public hearing to order. We have one item, which is to talk about the grants that we're applying for and what we're gonna use them for. So I'm gonna read out what that is and then invite any comment. So, Fountain Hardwoods considering making an application to the state of Vermont for two community development block grants for disaster recovery. Those are CBDGR. Under another Vermont Community Development Program, one grant for planning, for a planning project and another for an implementation project. Public hearing is tonight. The proposal is to apply for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in CBDG-dR planning funds and another one-point-five-million in CDPGDR implementation funds, which will be used to accomplish the following activities. The planning project, so that's the smaller one, is to, is a scoping study of the section of the Lemoyle River that runs through Hardwoods designated downtown. The goal of this study is to develop a comprehensive approach to restoration of riverbanks, to propose alternatives, estimate costs, identify potential funding sources, and provide design work. The implementation project, the other more expensive one, involves floodplain restoration on a fourteen-acre townhome parcel downstream of Cooper Brook. This is the area that a lot of people may think of when they think of the Lemoyle flooding and we used to occasionally hire an excavator to scoop out ice on that section.
And then you can pull up the pictures.
Um, so activities will include topographic surveys and collection of hydrologic data to evaluate flood risks and flow patterns. Mitigation measures are likely to include flood benching. Drafts of the proposal applications are available at Town Manager's office Monday through Friday, seven-thirty a.m. to three-thirty p.m. You can contact Town Manager David Upson at four-seven-two-six-one-two-zero. That's what we're doing.
There's the picture of the area that we're talking about for the implementation grant.
Excellent.
That's, um, the first one is looking north, just downstream of the river bridge on the LBRT. So it's, it'd be everything to the right of the river.
That building that you see there is at Tops?
Correct.
Yep.
And then on the next picture, everything on, it's like a continuation of that parcel. It's everything on the left side of the river.
So there's potential for flood benching.
Flood storage.
Flood storage, which would, it basically entails lowering elevation there, right?
Yeah.
So that the floodwaters more easily inundate that area instead of going somewhere else.
Correct. And it's, uh, you can't see it in either of the photos, but the convergence of the Cooper Brook is right there.
Oh, yeah, it's right there, in the middle of that.
And that's the spot that backs up and that's where we had trouble. That's what flood to fire station.
Yep.
And Wilket Street.
And it's also where we've had trouble in the past with ice dams.
Correct.
Same area, same convergence of Cooper Brook with this, so I suppose possibly it could even help with that ice dam issue, but I don't know.
Is it part of the, um, we have that buyout happening on Summer Lane, does that add to the land that we can do things on?
Uh, that's a different, that's a different project.
Different area.
Different product development.
Okay.
Also will help with flooding, but not part of this grant application.
Cool.
But same area of town generally.
Correct, yeah. Our community development.
Please be.
Would like to chime in.
I was just gonna say that this same parcel was the focus of a floodplain restoration project like a decade or two ago.
Yep.
But repeated flooding and the deposits from repeated flooding have sort of built it back up again, so.
Oh, good.
The thing about restoration projects is there is a certain amount of maintenance that, you know, has to happen, so, um, yeah, Kristen discovered that when she was doing this research for this grant.
Okay. Interesting, I did not know that.
In that area, the river was actually straight back in the day.
Yeah, it was the river, if you can say it's.
Not the greatest.
But in this case, it's not a fast-flowing section at any time, really.
Unless it is.
Yeah, definitely. Except during extreme flood events.
Yep. So this is the implementation grant and then the planning grant would be from the Cottrell Street Bridge upstream to the area of Hays Service Station. So hardening that, I call, I call that the power blast.
Right.
That's where it comes through our downtown, so the planning grant would be to have an engineering firm look at that section of the river and come up with some strategies to harden the riverbanks along the downtown section.
Is there, um, does that include dredging that area? There's a lot of stuff in that area of Hays.
So, I encourage you to attend next week's seminar at the library about dredging and river dynamics associated with dredging. With that control, there's effects to the downstream portions of the river, so if that were to be the case, we'd wanna make sure that didn't negatively affect this project.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah.
It's probably even more pronounced now because the river's so low.
Right.
So, when the river's at its normal height, it's not as obvious, right?
Yeah. Again, another, I think probably another area of the river that was dammed and straightened historically so we could populate or settle in the downtown area, I heard, so.
Great to see that, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, I, I think we're going into this with pretty open minds about what will be proposed, but my understanding is it can be anything from like a pretty highly engineered project in some place, like maybe another retaining wall or something, to like planting, you know, in certain areas. So it's, there's a whole array of potential strategies, we just don't know what is best suited for this stretch of the river, so it'd be interesting to see what they come up with.
And with the planning grant, they'll, they'll definitely be more Republican, but so let's say Republican.
Yeah. I mean, it seemed, I mean, I look at these two projects and think about them, I think about how through down Hardwood, you call it the power blast, but basically we're wanting to really preserve our downtown, that's our main goal there.
Yeah.
Keep the river in its banks, whereas down here for the implementation grant, really, okay, we've got a little space, let's let the river spread out so it doesn't inundate other areas, but we just don't have that option in the downtown area.
Right.
Here's me.
But again, if we let it out a bit downstream of town, hopefully that means water won't be maybe backing up quite so much into town. I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm not a river dynamics person, but it could positively affect the downtown.
Or, I mean, I would assume that it would help, it would positively impact like Atkins Field neighborhood, you know, that whole neighborhood, if you're alleviating that exit of Cooper Brook into the one.
It may not eliminate it.
Alleviating.
But it may not eliminate flooding, but it would be, maybe the waters wouldn't get so high in the very straight district.
Right, and if they don't get so high, they don't touch as many houses.
Right.
That isn't as impactful for the houses that you get to, yeah.
It's amazing what just like an inch or two, you know, difference can make between like massive damage and just kind of getting by.
Yeah. Any other thoughts or comments about these two grants and what we're talking about?
My only question was about the timings, yeah, so we have the public hearing and then we can officially.
The, the applications are, are being written right now, but of course we, you know, we don't have to submit them, like there was, you know, a great deal of debate against them, but we had to get started on them because they are due at the end of the month. And Heather's goal is to submit them by next Friday, so that way if, if it turns out things are missing or they want us to tweak things or attach something different, there's time before the absolute deadline, so, um, we've, we've gotten much better numbers as of today. It looks like our, the budgets we were looking at were pretty darn close, so we're good, but now we have like more detail in our budgets and, um, it's coming together, but I'm very grateful that she's working on these for us because they are kind of complicated applications and it's just nice, I mean, we're, we're all working on it, hope he's been helping a lot, um, but just to have somebody who does this all the time really helps keep things moving.
Great.
Anybody else have anything? Um, I think, I think we have a, an item on our agenda, this communication and questions from the audience, but I think we've been inviting communication from everyone.
Yeah, there's, I will say that the implementation grant has no match.
That's pretty amazing.
And the planning grant, there is a match.
I don't believe there's a match for either.
There was, but there was the brick, we allocated the fifty thousand for the brick, was in the application, it does say there's a match.
Mm-hmm.
Of fifty-six thousand.
But we don't have it.
Um, we already allocated the fifty thousand from the brick fund, the brick program that just got.
Pulled up.
Yes, but I need to clarify that with Heather, because it does say in the application.
Okay.
That could be misspeaking.
I, I thought this program did not require.
I thought so too, but it was in the, the planning grant application.
So you're gonna follow up.
Yeah, in any case, as you said, we have it if we need it.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Anything else? Uh, all right, I'm gonna adjourn the public hearing at, um, it's about five forty-five.
Oh, it's six.
All right, so it's finally six o'clock on Thursday, September eighteenth, so we call the regular select board meeting to order, first item, set adjust the agenda, anybody having?
Yep, we wanna add, um, to, do we wanna do that, this meeting, the bids for the trailheads?
Oh, yeah, 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 sure.
Okay, so we wanna, we'll review and accept the bids for installation of the two trailheads, the pause place and the trailhead.
I didn't see that in our folder.
Keyoff, no, it just came in yesterday, but I can explain that, and if you wanna push it.
Say one bid is an M six.
Uh, yeah.
A motion to add M six.
Anything else?
No.
Okay.
A motion to add M six bids for trailheads.
It's one bid.
One bid for the trailheads?
Okay.
Jake.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed. Motion carries, so it was updated agenda, uh, okay, first is communication with the audience, we actually have audience tonight, thank you for coming, does anybody wanna talk to us about anything that's not on the agenda before we get rolling? Yes, please.
Sue Rehird, town resident, business owner, um, there's a lot of uncertainty in town and uneasiness about people being able to afford living here with tax increases and what it may be, and yet the select board seems to be focusing on acquiring the Davis Buffalo Mountain property, and I just have some questions for the select board as to why they find that to be something that's important right now, to take that parcel out of the tax base, why they're focusing on that, why they didn't get any sort of town input on it before agreeing to move forward, um, and what are they doing to ensure that the current trail that is their, that businesses rely on, what are they doing to protect that?
Uh, I'll start with the easy one, I think what you're referring to as a current trail is Wake Farm Road, which is.
Nope.
No, it's not.
So, so no, this is the, um, the town forest project.
Yep.
The two parcels.
Yep, I got that.
And the trail is behind, um, off of Brook Road, behind Davis' property, next to the Cooper Brook.
Right.
There's a section of the trail that goes up into the woods and then comes down at Atkins Field.
Okay.
And to the fire station, to House Pizza, people park at the fire station, access the services in town.
And this is VAS, VAS and both?
VAS, both.
Both.
I guess my concern is, it seems like the process was a bit rushed, even though some of you might have said otherwise, like maybe we need to slow down, get a little more input, yet you voted to go ahead and proceed without any sort of public comment or input, and I just wonder how that's best for the town.
Wasn't it up to the conservation, what, what they supposed to post all of that? But there was a process that was only beginning.
Yeah, so it's still beginning.
Yeah.
So, but we did vote that we would accept it if they managed to raise the funds to buy it. And I think that then there will, my understanding is that there will be a process to determine what uses are, are still.
Allowed.
Allowed and encouraged on that land, and that will be a public process around that, it'll be an opportunity for people to not only weigh in, but participate on a committee that will help decide those things.
So you didn't get any input to go ahead with it, but you expect us to, to hope and pray that you take our input to what's gonna happen to it? Is that not like asking for forgiveness instead of permission?
Well, so part of, part, it's a really big question, and there were definitely concerns about that, so the rush was, um, there are a lot of different grants that the conservation commission needed to have in order to make this work, um, and there, uh, the planning commission came before us, we actually had two, this came out of two different meetings, um, and there were quite a few different organizations in town that came and talked to us about it, and the planning commission identified, I don't know exactly where in the planning, where in our town plan they brought it from, because I don't have it in front of me, um, but it did state it in the town plan, which is created by everybody in town, that this is a goal, to provide more public lands, so, um, that was talked about after meeting as well, um, so I, for me, it felt like, yes, it was a little bit rushed, mainly because the property was on the market, so the commission felt like they had to reach out to the property owner, um, but there was also a lot of evidence to me that there were people in town who were excited about it, that there was work done in the planning commission to do this kind of stuff, and the thing that I think is unique about this is that whatever uses for that land, if we end up, it's a big if, if that happens, that we get to decide in the town how we wanna use that property, and there's a great example in Wilket, where there's a Wilket town forest and the town decided every single way that they wanted to use that property for hunting, fishing, trails, really, it could be the same, it could also be more open, so, um, there's a lot of really, I don't know if you've gotten information.
I've read it, and it very specifically says pedestrian use, non-motorized pedestrian use, with the exception of certain bikes.
For, for which part of it?
All of it.
For the presentation that they provided to us or for the, for what they did in Wilket?
For what you're proposing this property will be used for. It's very specific language in there that says non-commercial pedestrian use.
So I don't.
And all due respect, you didn't even know the trail went through there, now we're just bringing that to your attention.
Well, I did know the trail went through there, but, so, but anyway, I don't think that's the point, I think, I totally agree with you in that, I think it would be incredible, I'm just speaking for myself, that was like, and it could be incredible opportunity to have that land be preserved for everybody in town to continue to use, so we gave the going in for them to start the process, the conservation commission is really the group to ask about it, because they're the ones who are just starting, they're working with a bunch of other organizations to put the money together, so.
And I apologize for my late arrival, which trail runs through there?
The VAS.
And it goes to my, her business, to my business, I'm Hardwood House of Pizza, and we, we.
Could you speak your name for us?
Um, Michelle DeMars, and we thrive on that in the winter, like, we're, we're slow and that gives us money, and that place has been there for thirty-nine years, and, um, like, we need that, we need the snow machiners to come, we rely on that, they rely on us, and I think that, you know, we have, we have this beautiful rail trail, we have the Hazen Trails up behind Hazen, um, why do we need more trails? That's just my personal opinion, like, for, for people that can walk around on, maybe the not-so-good people in town, because I've had to personally deal with that through our trail from House of Pizza, um, the people that are struggling with addiction and they're on our trails and they're on our property, so we're gonna have them up in the woods and our kids can be in the woods, like, I just, I don't understand why, like, somebody could buy that property and pay taxes towards the town, like, I pay a lot of taxes in this town, my house isn't in this town, but I pay a lot of taxes in this town, I have a lot of places here, we have a lot of businesses, and, um, our taxes jumped up like crazy, and I just, I personally don't like that you guys, like, even that committee didn't contact the people that are on that trail that supports us.
So, I have to admit that I did not read anything about motorized use being prohibited, and I understood from our discussion with the folks who came that, that it sounded like nearly all uses except for development, in the sense of building houses and buildings were still on the table, so if that's not the case, I wanna know more.
And that was where like public input probably would have been a good idea before you decide for all of us what would be best, because you clearly didn't have all of the pieces that you needed to have to make that decision.
Yeah.
And in sometimes desperate, desperate times, call for desperate measures, we're in a desperate time, would it be great to have Buffalo Mountain preserved forever? Yeah, of course we would like that, but we also need people to be able to afford their taxes and to live here and to put food on their table and to clothe their children, like, great, but this is, this is not what you guys should be focusing on right now, our town is in trouble. So why, why, I guess that's, that's what I would like to know, why is that such a big push?
So I don't think it's a big push, I think it's one effort, there are a lot of efforts underway, and I don't view our town as being in trouble, but maybe I look at it from a different point of view, um, and, but I do completely agree that, um, that we need to reserve the existing trail access to there, so definitely will follow up with, um, with the conservation commission, the folks that are working with the, they can't, can't keep the name of the group right now, but because my understanding was, I didn't understand there was gonna be a prohibition, I thought they were pretty clear that all kinds of activities were gonna be on the table. It was really just about.
It was pretty specific, pedestrian use, it says it multiple times.
I, yeah, okay.
I, I just wanna speak up on the, um, the trails and the ATVs and snowmobiles, they bring a considerable amount of economic prosperity to the town, uh, we're one of the first towns and the first clubs that have a lot of the trails open, um, Donut Desets is full of snowmobile trailers in the wintertime, so it is a very important economic driver in our area, um, so, I'm a pro snowmobile, I'm a pro four-wheeler, um, or ATVs, the other thing is that our town is definitely not in trouble, and I'm gonna push back on that.
Okay.
I think we have a thriving community, I think you have the ability to come to the select board and speak your piece, but to say that our town is in trouble is, is a direct reflection of my leadership here.
Well, we did just have another business close doors on Friday.
Right, but I think that when times get tough, we figure out a way to get through it, and we're gonna continue to do that.
We being the key word, I guess, is what I would like to see more.
Yeah.
It's, it shouldn't be the people that sit in this room that make decisions for everybody.
Well, there's a lot of nights where there's nobody in those chairs.
With all due respect, it's pretty hard to sift through everything on the website, not everyone is savvy to see what's on the agenda.
Yep, yep.
I didn't even know that's how it was, was done, so.
Right, yeah, but, I mean, I for one really appreciate you coming here and pointing this out, I, yeah, like I said, I didn't realize there was a prohibition on motorized use, and I think that that's kinda worked. Um, and, yeah.
Maybe you already addressed this, but my understanding on it was that there was, again, some, uh, it was time sensitive, and then this was like, we're agreeing to them to look into it more and go through this process, which is much longer, and so there would be a lot more time to discuss the use of this property and what would all be going on, where there would be time for input.
My understanding was that if everything checked out the way that they had described, you agreed on behalf of everyone to, to go ahead with it.
We agreed.
Exactly, that's what I ordered.
We agreed to take ownership of the property if they could raise the funds to buy it, and then there's a process.
Guys, they, they.
There's a small, there would be a small economic, there would be a small economic requirement on the town too, that was also, that was also set up to twenty thousand dollars, that was set.
How much?
Up to twenty, well, they have the fundraised, and there was a commitment that the town made that night, up to twenty thousand dollars.
Are you sure?
I am.
Yes, it was in the gazette.
Well, oh, things are in the gazette, all due respect.
Okay, I know, but I was just saying, like, it was up to twenty thousand, is what, the twenty thousand was the number that I had heard.
I.
That is true.
My revelation is that we didn't commit to that.
So, can I just add, I think you're absolutely right, and I think that we should add it as an item to an agenda to get an update anyway, because that's a long time ago, and ask these questions.
Yeah, yeah, my dad's going on.
Ask these questions, because we obviously don't know all the answers, so it would be great to have it be a real item, and if you wanna come, why don't we have that as an asset item, that would be fantastic.
I have it written down.
Yeah, because that would be, would be great to have everything written down, and also the minutes, so we can just totally review everything.
And it'd be good to be able to provide some clear answers.
Yeah.
It would be great.
Yeah, but.
And it was my understanding that, yes, we agreed to take ownership of it, but that there would be a much longer, there was a longer process where we would have the ability to have input into the use of that, and what was or was not prohibitive or whatever, what's that?
It's management plan, yeah.
Right, but it's like we decided it's not motorized use. Right, but.
We didn't decide, my point is that that would be later on that we have, which we actually did not decide on, so, but, I mean, right? You shouldn't though, why would you?
You know what, you guys, two decades, I was in the trail, uh, land conservation business, two decades, over two decades, so I know a lot about the process.
So please.
And now, you had your opportunity to hear what I had to say the first night when you had voted me, now you guys figure it out.
Okay, thank you, so, uh, anybody else want to comment in this section of communication areas?
Well, I guess my, we're talking with.
Say your name.
Oh, sorry, Joe Rehird.
Yeah.
Um, we're talking with that trail and how it's been initially, I believe, and Danny might know more through this than to me, but there is actually a rail right of way that the town has from coming across that same property, and I don't think that was ever relinquished or could be relinquished.
Across that, oh.
Well, the Blower property.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a spur.
The log aircraft.
It would vary.
So that's what I'm talking about, rail trail spur, so there would be issues there, and there are issues there that we do use, so.
Right, but I'm just saying, if that is the right of way, then I guess the trail, the VAS clubs and VASA clubs would then come to town and.
Right.
Department of Transportation would be like, let's go back here, we have the right to this, which now goes right through someone else's property that.
But that's gonna exclude ATVs.
Yes, but we will have the access to get from there.
It must be, yeah, that, yes, yeah.
So that's just gonna be a.
I don't understand why we would just keep the existing trail.
Because of, they're not allowed, non-motorized vehicles.
If that's not allowed, I think then we have an issue with this whole.
But you're already in hold of the property.
Yeah, the management plan technically.
Isn't decided.
What, what, select, I shouldn't, I said I was gonna try, but, I don't wanna go home and eat supper, is what I want.
Danny, I didn't vote for you to be fired.
So, no, but, they, so, the management plan is when they'll decide what we can do with the land. So, no, but they, so, the management plan is when they'll decide what we can do with the land. What these folks are saying is the select board decided to take ownership. So, they're right.
Yes.
And they're right. Everyone's right right now, because we haven't got to the process where the management plan takes effect. So.
So, my understanding is that we'll, that we'll have to have a group of people from the town to decide out.
I, that's exactly how it works. And the whole plan starts off really inclusive.
Yeah.
And by the time we get the management plan that is basically structured for the purpose of land conservation, you end up with exclusion. So, at this point, when you're asking for money, these projects are inclusive.
Mm-hmm.
When you get to the management plan, it's when it gets excluded. And I know this from two decades of being in the motorized trail, where I'm in land conservation business. It's not something that I just, Danny Hamlin knows what he's talking about. Danny knows what he's talking about, because I've done it for twenty years.
I guess my, I mean.
Time and time again, over and over.
We, we do need to discuss this as a, as a actual item on our later agenda.
I agree.
To have more, more answers, but it was just, though, I think you agree that it is that we will, as a town, create a group that's gonna work on that management plan.
We will, but that's not what they're saying.
It's not.
Yeah, but they're a hundred percent right in saying that that's after the fact. Because we should have these discussions before.
You're asking for us to get involved after.
Before we obligated twenty thousand dollars and obligated the town forever to sat off the tax base and forever be responsible for managing that. That was a big deal.
Mm-hmm.
But no input. That's, was my plan.
Yeah.
And I think that's theirs.
Yeah.
At this level.
Has the town looked at the topography of the land here?
It's not great.
It's steep and wet.
So, I'm just saying, yes, trails would be great.
Right.
Houses would be great too. And I know for a fact we can build houses. We can build nuclear power plants in the landfill. We can do anything we want with land. We can do anything we want with land.
Put your mind to it.
And put your mind to it, and they do it every day. Have you been on the streets of Berry or Montpelier or St. John's Berry or Hydrick? When you leave Main Street, what direction do you go? Straight up or in the river? You can build wherever you want. So, to say that there's no development available in that three-hundred-and-some-odd acres, there's no development on Bridgman, because it's conserved, and there's no development on anywhere, there's no longer a valley with a flood plain, who's gonna pay for Hydrick?
Wow, those are some squeaky statements.
They're very true statements. I'm a hundred percent.
Okay.
Where, where's the future of Hydrick if everything is conserved?
Okay, that's fine.
Main Street?
Um, I think we should move on.
I think we should move down to that little bit.
You should have kicked me under the table.
We should tell me before.
Use your gamble.
Aye.
You said, you told yourself you were gonna.
All right, so, any other, hang on, another communication with the audience before I push this on? So, we'll.
How are, how is it, how are you leaving this?
We're gonna revisit.
It's gonna be an agenda item. I have outreach from the Conservation Commission, so they need to be here and to give us an update when we put this on the agenda.
And we'll discuss.
And on the process.
So, that will be going on to the town website every month and checking.
No, well, we can contact you directly.
Oh, no, you need to look for the agenda on the first and third Thursday of the month. That is your job.
We just need to come here.
It was kind of sneaking there.
I'm not spoon-keeping you agenda.
This is the, this is the best most of our time.
Yeah.
I think we can all agree that we're passionate about the area.
Yeah.
Let's start there.
And our community is not in trouble.
There's.
Take that back.
We'll talk later.
Take that back.
We will talk.
We do, there are troubles around our community as well as many others around Vermont, but I don't want us, they can play the same.
That's right. Rainbow's in this one, baby.
All right.
So, yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come back.
You don't wanna stay for the rest of the.
I have to go.
I wanna go meet some.
All right, uh, moving us on, uh, next up is, uh, select board to approve minutes from last time, which was September fourth, and I think that was paid well.
I have motion to approve the minutes that's written. Would I do that?
You can.
Well, that's the day we gotta meet you.
Second.
So, you say you have a motion to approve as written?
Sure.
Share your opinion.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, and, uh, that's standing. So, motion carries. Um, it's approved. Next town manager's report, Mr. Upson.
Okay, so, I'm gonna do the next three reports and I'm gonna try to get us back on schedule.
You're gonna take the fourth one too?
No, Reno's here.
All right.
This boss makes sure, she does well.
Okay, uh, so, I wanna thank the downtown partnership for their work in the tree planting that's been going on. Um, I would have gotten a lot of feedback from residents, um, saying that they're loving the trees and everything is going well on that project.
It's also the Conservation Commission.
And the Conservation Commission, yeah. Thank them both really good. And then, um, the buyouts are progressing. We have another closing, um, next month. Uh, the demos, the state has hired a contractor. They're, uh, finalizing some subcontractors right now. The Brush Street property should be taken down early next month. That's my, it's, uh, it's closed, as well as several other of the buyouts that we've closed on. Uh, the Sommet Lane property, the Wilka Street property, um, for starters. And then the two out on Route fourteen south. Okay, yeah, those two buyouts.
Um, so, can I ask a question about that?
Of course.
For Brush Street, are we gonna throw up a guardrail or something after we put them?
So, we're having commerce, we're, we're in those communication right now, because the state, uh, we have to follow certain FEMA guidelines. We have an EWP, um, project on that property. So, we have an engineer that's under contract to design the slope stabilization for that area. We will have to put up some sort of, um, barrier.
Jersey barrier.
Probably instead of a guardrail, because there's gonna be, there's really, um, the shoulder's gonna be limited there. So, we're gonna have to do something temporarily until they do the slope stabilization. But we're, we're on that, um, that issue. Um, I've got, uh, we had some lingering, uh, items that we needed to get out to USDA for the headbridge, uh, the payments and performance, performance bond paperwork. That has all been, um, submitted, waiting to hear back from them. I need to reach out to them and find out why it's taking so long that they're not getting back to me. Um, the wastewater treatment facility and the fire station projects are moving ahead. We reached, uh, with FEMA, we reached some, uh, good progress today with, with the meeting with FEMA on wastewater treatment facility. Uh, our engineer, Paul, Paul Rich and Elliot, have provided them with a very detailed cost estimate of, uh, replacing the, the plant in kind. So, we're basically building the plant back to the way it was. They have to do that exercise first to determine how much that's gonna cost. Then they can apply that cost to mitigation up to a hundred percent of the cost of the project. Um, so, we're talking about elevation and then, um, moving ahead, which is later on down the road we decide what we wanna do. If we wanna move the plant, change the process, or build a elevated plant. Um, again, same processes, uh, going on with the fire station. What's great about the fire station is we've already done the exercise of a detailed cost estimate to rebuild the fire station. So, we're gonna use that Creever Road, um, cost estimate and engineering that was done, um, to apply that to the same kind of process, the elevation, uh, to elevate the structure at the fire station, see what the cost benefit is, but likely we're gonna take that money and, and continue with the project up here. So, uh, there was many months of non-movement and, uh, in, information collection going on with our engineers, with FEMA, and those, the meeting today was very hopeful. They hope to have, uh, decision to us in the next couple of weeks, hopefully, if everything goes good. They wanna close out these projects by November, but then November they wanna have kinda wrapped up and obligated. So, that's exciting.
It's huge.
Yeah.
Only a few weeks.
We've done, uh, which, that's been a long haul on those. Uh, but, um, looking back on a lot of things, I was telling the chair today, I went through and kinda did a little cleanup in the office and, uh, going through a lot of paperwork. We've gotten a lot of projects done and we've moved things forward. So, it's, it's reassuring that we're actually recovering from these two, two massive floods. Uh, just the last couple of things, the cemetery, they installed, uh, our Sexton installed some railings up at Main Street, um, and did some work up, uh, with some green burial graves, uh, which I've learned a lot about in the last couple of weeks. Um, so, that's, uh, an improvement up at Main Street Cemetery. And I can move into the road performance report.
Question.
Yep.
Pedestrian bridge coming status?
Yep.
Where we at?
Everything's in place. The plan is to purchase that bridge as soon as we get a notice to proceed with the four act money.
And our contractor is still?
He's on board.
Is he signed contractor?
Yep, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just said sign that a week ago.
Yeah, that's all been done.
But the notice to proceed hasn't come.
Correct. So, um, one thing I will say that, uh, Mark from CCS brought, uh, their traffic planner, uh, to the site and they said that probably the best option for traffic control is to put three lights in. So, they'll have one-way traffic through town. So, a light on Wilka Street, a light on Mill Street, and a light, um, in front of the Wow School, yeah.
Hmm, that's gonna be fun.
Really good.
And we have to do this in the summer.
Really, do you think about that? Really?
That's the safest.
How?
But.
We're about a pretty safe option.
That's gonna be.
What about cheapest?
It's not sort of safe.
Well, he's talking.
How about this one trap with your own wrist sign?
I like that.
Yeah, okay.
That's your own wrist.
So, we'll try to, that's gonna be a Charlie Fox trap. We'll try to figure out how to make it less of one, so.
I just don't even know where, I mean, there ain't no room there.
So, when I heard that, I was like, oh, yeah, that's.
Hopefully that doesn't line up with.
You know how long those lights are?
Over on sixteen at the same time.
Right.
That would be really fun.
The Colbert on sixteen?
Over by, um, Drum, Drum Space.
Oh, yeah, that's B. Chance. That'll be ten years before they take that. Um.
So, the notice to proceed might come in the next.
It's going, let's, let's say.
That's USDA.
Set to be out.
Yeah, checks in the mail.
That's USDA.
Yeah, yeah. I need to jingle on them a little bit and get that ball going. Um, so, the road performance report, so, uh, they've done ditching on Hopkins. They fini- finished the twenty-four meter pits, so they've got like forty-six left. Um, they're dealing with a pretty large sewer backup, um, down on Kellogg Street. And then the PD's just been dealing with quite a few death investigations and all status is normal there. So, the chief's going back tonight, so watch out for a while. I'm back on schedule.
You are. Are you, um, just one thing, thing about police and the radio transmitters?
Yep.
That's up on us.
Oh, yeah, so, the twenty-fifth, uh, N E K broadband installs the internet at the repeater site and that's the missing piece. Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, so that, that project's moving just as fast as the pedestrian project.
Oh, come on.
Oh, it's faster.
Yeah, it's gotta be faster.
What?
Did I miss?
That's true.
Oh, they painted the crosswalk for that.
Four.
Yeah, the crosswalks. Yeah.
Yes.
They repainted it so that they're brighter for the. Okay.
All right. Um, so, next item, thank you very much.
Yep.
Next item is Harvick Electric Department Report, and we have Reno DeMars here.
Um, not much to report, but, um, we're expecting reports from the state, FEMA, about the Wilka Hydro. Uh, they should be in before our November meeting, um, the condition, damage and repairs, um, their view. The first stage of the Crasberry Circuit project, uh, cutting, um, starts Monday morning. Uh, we have Ashland coming in with several crews. Uh, they're gonna be clearing the line from, um, approximately the corner shore, um, up through to, uh, the end of the three page in Crasberry Common. Um, I think X estimated about eight weeks, um, to do the project.
What, is the project rewiring that? Are we connecting or holes or just clearing?
Open it up. Clearing, right, yeah, yes.
For reliability? For reliability?
Well, yes, reliability, um, protection of the line itself has, it's been impacted by many danger trees and, uh, hopefully some of those will be removed.
Okay, great.
Yeah, um, and Harvick Electric is, um, in the process of restructuring personnel positions and, um, job descriptions. Uh, that's a step that's, uh, been needed for some time and moving forward with that. And that's about what I got.
Perfect. And we have a joint meeting with the two boards coming up.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday? Week from today?
Forty-four what?
Five-thirty.
All right.
Yeah, I'll get the agenda posted soon. I have it.
Next Thursday, forty-four.
All right, thank you, Reno. Very good.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, next is item one, select board to authorize David Upson to be the town's voting delegate for the annual meaning of V L C T passive and herb.
I'm wishing to authorize David Upson to be the town's voting delegate for the annual meanings of the V L C T passive and herb.
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm opposed.
Aye.
Okay, okay, all right. Motion carries, so he's gonna have to represent us.
He's out of room.
That's gonna be good. All right, here we go.
Get ready.
Next, um, item two, select board to hear from Theron Lay Sleeper and Terry Riley on current central Vermont solid waste management district information to offer the garbage trash ordinance. So, and imagine that's you guys in the green shirts.
We'll, uh, come up here so you can see us back.
All right.
So, I'm Theron Lay Sleeper, I'm the general manager down at the central Vermont Waste District.
Terry Riley, enforcement officer at central Vermont Solid Waste Management District. So, thanks for inviting us here.
Yeah, thanks for having us. Um, we were asked to come to talk about the trash ordinance, but I thought it'd be a good opportunity to introduce ourselves and, and kinda refamiliarize everybody with the work we do, um, kind of updates all around, so. Um, so, we just had our, our Harvick Hazardous Waste Collection Day, um, August sixth. Had a good turnout there, collected, uh, about thirteen thousand dollars worth of hazewaste to dispose of. Um, we'll, we'll, we're planning on continuing to do that, um, every year as we have for, for many years. But, um, moving forward, we're gonna be offering that service year-round, three days a week at our new facility in Berlin. Um, we haven't opened it yet. We're hoping to open that this fall. We're just waiting on one more piece of equipment, um, before we can start accepting those materials. Um, we're gonna be holding a, an opening event and we'd love to have some of you come, join us and, and see the facility. Um, we'll, we'll be in touch with, um, with the select board and town manager about those events and, um, kinda that, that exciting stuff that's going on. Um, we're also gonna be reopening our grants program. Um, we have a number of grants that are available to the, to our member municipalities, of which Harvick is one. We've got nineteen towns, but, um, we've got our Green Up Day Grants that are every year. We've got municipal services grants for solid waste infrastructure type activities. Like we used, or Harvick used that recently for some bins and signage at the Lemoil Valley Trailhead um, resting places, I believe. Um, and then we also have emergency solid waste cleanup grants available that, that, um, that will be available for all our member towns as well. The other thing that, um, that we're really focused on is flood debris and emergency planning for, for managing that flood debris. It's something that, um, we've all been dealing with over the past few years. Uh, and it's gonna be a big focus of, of our work moving forward is working with all our member towns to figure out what to do with all the debris, all the, the wood and the, and making sure that we're pulling, you know, like keeping the haz waste and the dangerous things out of it so that we're not endangering our workers. Um, working with towns to try to, you know, make sure that we have a plan for when the inevitably disaster strikes, um, we're gonna be able to know what to do with all the stuff and do it in a safe way. So, um, we'll be reaching out over the next, you know, next years, um, to, to work with you all on, on getting those plans in place, figure out emergency staging areas, um, and that kind of thing so we can, we can support you in those, uh, in those events.
Great.
And, uh, I guess the next, the only, the only other thing was, was the trash ordinance, which is what, you know, we, we came to talk about. But, um, do you all have any questions for us before we dive into that?
Is your new facility in Berry gonna be somewhat like the, like the Stowe facility that accepts kinda anything? You walk, you go in, there's places for almost everything if you can imagine?
So we don't take everything. Um, we, we only have ten staff, um, so we've, and we've got to focus on specifically hazardous waste from households and small businesses and then the, the landfill band items. So we're talking about electronics, we're talking about batteries, we're talking about fluorescent bulbs, um, freon and, and CFC containing devices like, uh, white goods, refrigerators, freezers, dehumidifiers, um, tires, clean wood, we're, we're, we're trying to, there, there's already plenty of infrastructure for regular trash recycling. Um, we're trying to fit that niche and, and provide the services that, um, that are kind of more specialized and, and dealing with the more, you know, hazardous and, and dangerous materials that we're trying to manage safely.
But the ARC has moved up there, it's just there are some fewer items that the ARC takes now.
Yeah, we've, we've shut down the, the Berry facility, uh, and moved up, up the hill out of the flood zone because we got flooded the past two years on July tenth, um, and spent months cleaning.
What's the address of the facility?
Three Hundred Grainger Road. It's, it's right there in the industrial park, um, just across the road from the asphalt plant, the concrete plant.
Okay.
Seal by?
That's right, yeah.
Cecil's.
No.
Cecil's by?
Great.
For your die.
Yeah, okay. Um, great, well, um, Terry, Terry introduce himself and, um, and then we can talk about the, the trash ordinance.
Good.
Of course, I like this.
Yeah.
He's gonna be a garbage cop now.
I am, I'm the garbage cop, but I, I'm, I'm quite proud of that nickname. Um, and it's a, um, it, it's a new position that, um, the district created, um, that I have filled. Um, it's the first time the district has had a, a full-time position dedicated, um, to enforcement. Um, I am housed within outreach and education, so my, my first, my first line of work is outreach and education. Um, and I'm finding that's, that's, that's needed quite a bit, um, uh, just in terms of, um, be- because enforcement and compliance hasn't really, like I said, been a full-time position. It's sputtered along, I would say, from what I can tell, you know, looking historically, um, with the efforts that the district has made, so there's, um, I'm, I'm needing to do a lot of education around what authority the, the, the district has. Um, even some basic, um, conversations around, in fact, that it is a municipality, so it has the, the regular types of authorities that, that a town has, for example. So I'm starting my conversations at a really, at really, um, basic level, um, just in terms of what my roles and responsibilities are. Um, and so, for example, um, inspecting loads that haulers, uh, are hauling and inspecting facilities. That's, that's received differently, uh, across our nineteen, you know, member, uh, district. Um, because we have, in, in, those, those facilities are structured differently. So for example, we have some that are, um, owned and operated by the town, member town itself. We have some that, um, are on the, the town land that's contracted out to a, to a, a service provider. And then the other scenario is, um, like, like you guys have here with All Metals, it's, it's a privately grown facility and that service is provided, um, on that, uh, that company's land and, and, um, so I, as I visit the facilities, and this is just, again, just an example, um, I have different types of conversations and I'm, and I'm greeted and received differently. So that's, um, so, um, that's where I'm at now and, um, I, the idea is that, um, out of outreach and education, we, we build on these existing relationships that, that already, um, are in place and you see more of me around town, for example. Um, I've been, I've been to All Metals, um, up the road, um, once so far and, um, and it was a, it was a great outcome, um, but there was a little bit of like, huh, you do what, uh, at first?
Yeah, positive.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, um, but we're, we're off to a great start. Um, so, um, I, I, uh, I, I think that might be it in a nutshell. I mean, if you have any questions about the roles and responsibilities of the enforcement officer, feel free.
I think that's.
Sounds to be, uh, the title, I like the new title, it's still education is your primary goal this time.
It is, it is.
You're gonna take it, you're, you're gonna educate.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, so, so very quickly, just, just to that, just to give you an example. Um, um, I, I can function as an issuing officer with the Judicial Bureau, I can, I can write a ticket, right? But, and, and we just rewrote our municipal, um, excuse me, our civil ordinance so, so that, um, the, my first step in, i- is, is to create an action, an improvement plan with the person. So I, I can't per ordinance, uh, just go write, write tickets, except for a few, except for a few exceptions.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so, so it's, 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 you know, and what I'm doing at facilities now is like, hey, did you even know you need a license to haul solid waste? So that's where it starts most of the time, and then it's like, no, you know?
The great approach.
This is commercial facilities or residential as well.
So, um, a, a person needs, um, a license to haul solid waste if they're, if they're doing it for compensation.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So that's the enforcement piece.
Yeah, compliance, I think we start with compliance, yeah. And if, if, if the person just, you know, totally blows off the improvement plan, and the improvement plan is, it could be as simple as, I didn't know, now I know and now I'm going to make the effort to, to be in compliance, improve, improvement plan completed, you know what I mean? Or, or, oh my gosh, you know, I, 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 uh, so, just getting into weeds a little bit.
I do better, but I did.
I knew better and, and so like.
I won't do it no more.
Yeah, I, I, or, or like, um, you know, so there's like a, there's a thirty-three dollar a ton surcharge fee that's, is, is required to be paid, um, uh, to the district. Let's say somebody really didn't pay it and they're behind a lot. The improvement plan could be, I might need, you know, six months to pay this thing off. Okay, fine, take your six months of, you know, pay it off, then you pay it off, you know? So it's, it is really out of outreach and education.
Yeah, good job.
Okay, so I wanna come back to the trash ordinance. Um, I understand that there's been some discussions at the select board and in the town about, um, about some properties that have, have junk on them and about how you wanna deal with it.
Can you define junk?
Yeah.
Uh, junk, well, you, you guys have it defined, yeah.
So can I?
Two.
I have a question, or go ahead. I have just a some, a scenario I wanna run by you.
Yes.
And then we can talk about it, but go ahead.
Really?
So if we get to the point of, um, section five subsection D, removal by Hardwick. Fifteen days after notice is given to any owner of any property, business, industry, institution or construction site to remove solid waste, garbage, junk, junk owner vehicles or trash from premises, Harvick is authorized to clean up such property by use of Harvick employees or by employing agent of Harvick. I'm under the impression under the fourth amendment of the constitution that you cannot enter somebody's property without a court order or a warrant. That's a legal search and seizure. So I have wondering how, what the mechanism is for me to authorize agents of the town to enter someone's property without due process to remove items from said property and dispose of items.
That are theirs.
That are theirs, because under landlord tenant law, anybody that removes property in a landlord tenant situation has to hold it for thirty days and they have to provide them with storage.
There, there's rules to do.
Yeah, so I'm just like, I feel that the definition of, of trash or junk, I, I understand there's definitions for each category, um, but I'm concerned that there is an unlawful process of search and seizure.
No matter what it's called, you can't take somebody's garbage, you can't scavenge.
And I know there's health orders, like, like you can get a health, you can get a health order to enter property, but that's still an order signed by a judge.
Okay, so I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, I would defer to the town's legal counsel on, on these specific questions.
Yeah.
But you do have a trash ordinance that says basically, don't load up your yard with trash and if you do, the, the town can tell you to clean it up. And that's the first step of this, right? That's the abatement.
Yeah, yeah.
I would start with that. And I, I mean.
But in the worst case scenarios, like there's, there's, they're not, they're not listening.
Okay, so.
So we go right to this and this is the outcome and I'm concerned that we open up a chain of liability.
I would think that should be, that's a legal question, not a solid waste.
But it's, but in our ordinance.
But is it, does it say that in their sample ordinance that you guys pass out?
So our ordinance pertains to facilities and solid waste haulers.
Right.
We're, that's, that's who we're in charge of regulating.
Yeah.
We're not in charge of, um.
But you sent us a sample ordinance, sorry, did they? A sample trash.
I said there, the sweep, it's, it's theirs. And then I said ours.
Correctly, so my question is that the one that you guys are sending out as an example, what does it say? Does it say that we can go on people's property? See, my point is, ours might not be legal.
Just because we say in our ordinance, you know, that doesn't supersede anything.
So what are we gonna here? It shouldn't say that.
Well, I think that we should probably then look at our ordinance amended to then have a legal process that would then allow us, give us the due process.
Well, there is an appeal.
So, and it also, your, your ordinance says that it's governed by the Vermont Judicial Bureau too. So, so it sounds like, and again, I would defer to your legal counsel, but it sounds like, you know, you issue this notice of violation, right? You notice there's a bunch of garbage piled up, it's against the ordinance that you have in place. Issue a violation and ask them to clean it up, step one, right? They don't do it, you, you issue them a, a civil ticket, right, uh, through the Judicial Bureau. The Judicial Bureau will either say it's a fine or, or give you a court order to clean it up. I mean, I haven't done this process and it's, it's really up to the town to, to double check with their legal counsel and, and follow the process, but that's kinda what I'm envisioning how this would, would work.
I think what, thanks, Theron, I think, um, when this came up before for the select board and it's very helpful to have your expert opinion here, there was conversation about, does it even make sense to have an ordinance if we're not going to enforce it? If we, if we don't feel comfortable as a town deciding who, what's trash and what's not? If we, if we hardly ever, do we ever give violations for trash?
We haven't.
We haven't, but is that, are we giving it to the same thing or are we giving it, like, is that an equitable process? Who's doing that? Is it, is it the police, is it the town? So I think that's where, where this started was like, well, if we're not going to enforce it, why do we have it? And that's, I think, when we said, well, let's talk to some people who, this is their business and they actually know what they're doing. Um, so it might just be a process of us, as Tim said, going through this and maybe with a lawyer to make sure, I mean, this was.
Twenty sixteen.
Done twenty sixteen, so it's time to review it anyway, it's been almost ten years. So like make something that's actually not gonna be just white paper that we use for recurrent tests.
There was some input from VLCT, no?
We did, so, so we, um, we just rewrote our, um, sorry, our, our, um, civil ordinance and, um, Vermont League of Cities and Towns is a tremendous resource and, and they have, um, uh, model ordinances, um, um, that you can model yours after and I would recommend that, uh, that, that your, all of your ordinances be modeled after, after their model ordinances or.
We do use a lot of that.
Yeah, so, so, so that would be a place to start. Um, I, I did just speak with, uh, someone from Vermont League of Cities and Towns today who's sort of their, their enforcement specialist and a recommendation that, uh, that he made was to specify, um, who in the town or whomever may, um, conduct the enforcement actions, right? So that was a recommendation I received that I'm passing along to you from Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And then, um, most likely you, you already have, uh, someone on staff or, or affiliated with the town that is an issuing officer with the Judicial Bureau. So perhaps that is the person that gets named or identified, you know, the, the role that that person is filling, um, as, uh, the person able to conduct enforcement. And then that would go to, and then, and then you have a, a pathway for the Judicial Bureau. And then, um, I think you got a really good point about going onto someone's property. I had that conversation myself with the same, uh, enforcement specialist at Vermont League of Cities and Towns and he said, no, you can't go on somebody's property, you know, and you can't, you can't just, you know, you, you don't have that. But, um, if, um, the thing about the Judicial Bureau is, um, the person could just blow it off. The, the, the Judicial Bureau doesn't have, like, even if they get fined, you know what I mean? The Judicial Bureau doesn't have the authority and power to, uh, issue an injunction, but, but, but the, the, the town, Harvick, uh, as a municipality does have the authority to, to, um, elevate it to, um,
League.
The next.
Criminal court.
Yeah, um, where.
Superior court.
Sorry, yes, thank you, Superior Court, where, um, they do have the injunction. So that, the, the, the pathway is before you, you know, um, and, and, um, I think the two main recommendations is, if you were interested in revising it, you know, reference the model ordinances from Vermont League of Cities and Towns and, and find out who could be that issuing officer so you can start the, the legal process, um, yeah.
Of the towns that are in your district, um, do you, do you know how many of them have trash ordinances and if any of them are successful with them?
I know that a lot of them do. Um, we haven't met with, with all the towns yet, um, yeah, but we can, we can add that to our list is to, to look through those, those different trash ordinances.
So what this little thing is about?
Most of them do have it, yeah.
As it is, as probably most communities, is neighbors being upset with the neighbors and dragging the municipality into being very weird. And that's what this is.
Right, right, right.
Is policy and being used in not the proper way.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's my understanding from the tiny, tiny little bit of, of listening that, that I've gathered so far is, and, and, and.
None of this is one of your thoughts on?
Yeah, well, but, but, but the, the only thing that I would offer about that is, I don't think that that's necessarily a, a policy issue and, and, and slash ordinance issue, right? I mean, the, the ordinance is, has really good intentions around, um, environmental protection and public health. So, um, I think, like, at least sort of in theory, you could get a, a misuse of how your tax assessor does that per, his or her job, how your, your, your dog or, you know, issues tickets, you know what I mean? How, um, you know, the person who's issuing parking tickets, you know what I mean? So, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't get rid of all of those ordinances because it, you have maybe more of a procedural problem than, you know what I mean, than, than, than a policy problem.
Yeah, I understand.
So, yeah.
I agree with you, that's.
Well, it's a, those, the, the expectation of privacy is not really taken into consideration in those ordinance. The parking ordinance, there's no expectation of privacy.
I just, because they, they all could get misused with what I was trying to make a point about.
Yeah, I understand exactly and I agree with you, I know what I'm saying, it was, the ordinance we have essentially missed, not that it's not misused, but not necessarily being used by the town. It's not being used by the town, it's being used by disputes, is what it's been mentioned by us. I say we, uh, thank you, gentlemen.
Tracy.
Tracy.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, it's up to the select board whether the ordinance gets misused or not. I mean, the, this, uh, a citizen can't do anything, you know what I mean? Like a citizen can bring a complaint. Like, a citizen can bring a complaint to you, but if you guys don't think it's legitimate, then you don't act on it, you know what I mean? So the misuse, I mean, people are going to complain about each other all the time. That doesn't, if you're the body that has been elected to decide whether or not that's a legitimate, uh, application of the ordinance or not. So I, 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 I think if it's being misused, it would be you guys who are choosing it, and I don't see that happening, I haven't seen that happen.
So it comes down to you to make sure it's, it's being done fairly.
Let's flip to Congress's permission to charge the trash.
That's a good idea.
I knew it, that's why I mentioned it all up.
I, I'm, I'm concerned about, uh, the legal ramifications, like, the legal cost of a lawsuit if we violate some of those constitutional rights by entering on their property and seizing their personal property.
Yeah, I understand.
But we don't, but we're not doing that anyway. Yeah, I mean, it says that we can, but we're not actually doing that, right? You have, you have.
No, but the expectation is by, the expectation by citizens that file on the complaint is that we're going to follow the letter of the ordinance, which says we are going to do that, that's the billing of the guy. You have an ordinance that says Opie is gonna grab his gloves and bag and go clean up the alley. Regardless whether, and he's going to determine whether there's trash or marbles or treasure or whatever. And all of that we know we can't do, so that's the cusp of the problem. So we need to throw this ordinance, the only question, sorry, to my thought, thinking, understanding, this whole question is about whether we rewrite the ordinance or throw the ordinance out altogether. I think it's been determined we need to rewrite it, so let's move on.
Yep.
Sure.
Now, see it.
Are you going to authorize the town manager to draft up a?
I am, I'm, no, I authorize, I expect to see a copy on the, uh, second, Thursday of October.
Okay.
And I want to offer, if you need some assistance with that, um, if you want us to, to look through it. And there's, there's been some more updates to solid waste regulations in the past years, um, such as Act one forty-eight, municipal recycling law, stuff like that, be happy to assist with that.
Um, we get five hours through the municipal assistance center from Vermont Legal and Cities and Towns for legal, uh, consultation. I don't know if this falls under that municipal assistance center for an ordinance. Back to your availability of grants, do you have a grant available for legal assistance? Because Vermont Legal and Cities and Towns will say, contact your town council for legal advice. So I'm wondering if we needed a lawyer to go through our ordinance and tighten it up, would you guys have the available funds so we don't have to have incur those fees in our regular operating budget?
I don't think it exists currently in our grant offerings.
Yeah.
But we are in the process of, of reworking those offerings, it's something that we haven't done in a while.
Right.
And I appreciate that feedback, maybe that's something that we can work into these revisions.
Right.
Specifically, if it's, if it's related to, you know, rewriting the trash ordinance, that makes sense. Um, I'm going to note that down, and I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Um.
Your trash always works.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're here for, we're here as a resource for you guys, um, specifically about trash, recycling, as waste, you know? It's, that's why we exist, so.
Great.
This is actually great trash talking, guys.
Yeah, appreciate you guys coming out.
When they go big break down.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, it's a pleasure, yeah, thanks for having us.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Being the fourteen being so bumpy and all.
Yeah.
Could be worse, I've seen worse.
Yeah, there ain't much worse, Alp Street, my favorite.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to move us on to item three, select board to review and consider approving FY twenty-six water and sewer rates presented by Finance Director Casey Ralabon on the goings. And, uh, we have these budgets in our packets. I don't know, can you guys talk about these at all last time when I wasn't here?
No.
So I'll just say that, um, we've had some preliminary meetings or a meeting where we went through the budgets with, um, Casey and Tanya and Opie and I. We, uh, we ended, uh, I think, found that, that we were missing some important data underlying our assumptions. But then Casey and Tanya were able to ferret out some more information that I think, um, helps me feel confident in these, these budgets, or the, yeah, for the whole. Casey, what do you want to tell us?
Okay, so I did screenshot, so I've got the water on up here first.
Can you make that, can you zoom and make it bigger, because it's very small on the screen?
That one probably. Better?
One more.
One more, Julie.
Oh, come on, that's okay.
Perfect.
What other things can we get, still to get?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so obviously the first thing we do is look at our expense budget, which for fiscal year twenty-six is the three forty-three, three eighty-nine up here. So that's all we're trying to do is meet our expenses. Um, so we look at what I'm here, um, what we're looking at for changes to meet that is five percent increase in the base rate. So for a typical residential that's twelve dollars a year, worth three dollars a quarter, pretty reasonable. And looking at the usage going from point zero zero, excuse me, point zero one one five, point zero one two, um, and looked at what we had for gallons in fiscal year twenty-five, which was about ten point seven million. So we're using ten and a half million as our estimator and what we collected last year. So with these rates, we should be able to meet budgets, like, expense budgets, that's what we're looking at. So typical user, we see a twelve dollar angle increased, and then less case a smidge on the usage. Questions about that?
I have just a couple, I don't have questions about that, I have another question, so I can wait. I don't think, I don't have a question about the five percent, I have a question. No, I have a question about quarterly allocations.
The quarterly allocation?
Like the.
Oh, the amount, the base, the amount of gallons we get for a base rate?
That, and, so I know in the past from helping out with some of these meetings that that, you change. Like, sometimes, in the past, sometimes we've had different residential amounts to make it, you know, so that way, a couple years ago, we had a lower residential amount for water usage. Usually felt like, oh, that might make it so somebody's not paying, somebody's not using eight thousand gallons of water, they're paying for that. So we can decide what the cap is for that usage, right? So my question is about the rates, it's more about the breakdown within the commercial gallons and the industrial gallons. The industrial gallons, pretty much the schools, right, Casey?
Yes.
Okay.
No, the schools are the institutions.
Institution.
Okay, so I guess my question is, like, without knowing the different businesses, are there businesses that are using a lot more than forty thousand? Like, could we break out the industrial gallons to have there be a few different rates to earn more money?
Is that equitable?
Well, I'm just, well, yeah, if you're a business that uses a lot less than forty thousand gallons, then you would pay less. But if you're a business who uses a lot more, then you would pay more. That's why we have, like, the breakdown in the commercial low.
Um, what Tanya does is she tries to sort businesses into rates that are most appropriate for their usage.
Correct, yeah, I mean, we can certainly create more categories, I'm just not sure it's necessary, because we have, we're sort of already doing that, Haley, with, like, looking at apartment buildings that are commercial residential, we go into the commercial residential. Um, we definitely look at them when they first come on to see where they, where they best fit.
And, um, and you're right, we've changed those, uh.
So how come we got so many under twenty-four, twenty-five? We got thirteen different categories and then.
Uh, I can answer that, so when we were, I mentioned that, that we, when we first met, we had some struggles with the underlying data.
Oh, that's the overage usage.
And what we determined was that the, we really don't have the resolution to break down the overage into which category it's coming from, as of when they pull the reports.
Right.
The system just doesn't do that.
We're, we're working on that, we have a new.
Right.
Yeah.
Because that's one of.
So, so that's why this one, when you look at the proposal, instead of adding an overage for every category, it just says overage.
Yeah, right.
Because that's all we really have.
And for budgeting purposes, the category is really kind of irrelevant, we just look at the total overage gallons, which we got, there's some data that we, when we discovered, um, and so that's where the ten point seven million came from. And so that's where it is, the ten point five million.
So I think that, that is very important in determining what that gallon usage is, like, eight thousand, like, eight thousand. That's the overage, you see what I'm saying?
Everything over eight is overage for, for residential.
Yeah, I was saying, we adjust that eight thousand, it could be ten thousand.
Used to be that.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's what this overage, you need to see your overage, because if you're getting too much overage, then you need to raise the base rate back.
Right.
No?
Not in my mind.
Because it encourages less usage.
No, I, because in my mind, I feel like I want us to be more, um, pay per use. So I'd like to have less weight on the, like, we didn't do this in this budget, but, but what I would like to see is less weight on the, um, on the base rate, a bit more on the.
So, yeah, I guess, like, my example was opposite.
Right.
But same.
But I don't really, I, I.
Right, no, I do too.
Yeah.
I, it came out wrong.
But we don't really have the data.
That was my point, we don't want to be charging, we don't want our base rate to be too high, it needs to be accurate.
Yes.
It doesn't want to be too high, too low.
But as for.
Because either we're taking advantage of rape or losing money, we're going to do it.
But as an example, like, as of right now, if you're in industrial, and it doesn't matter if you're using twenty thousand gallons a quarter or a hundred thousand gallons a quarter, you're paying the same.
Oh, you're right.
Because you're, because you're, anything over forty thousand, that's the, my understanding is that's what you're.
Yeah, but you're paying on.
That's your payment.
So that's what you're saying, but if your investor got only uses forty, that's all you pay.
Well, right, but if you, what I'm saying is if you, if you use eighty.
Yeah.
We don't have, we don't know how to.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, no, if you use eighty, then you pay for the, for the, for the bill.
Okay, okay.
You do, what I'm saying is we don't, they are doing the billing correctly, people are getting the correct bills. If they, if there are events and problems with some meters and, and those are dealt with on a case, a case basis, what, what we have trouble with and what they're working on is the reporting.
Okay.
So they can do the billing correctly, but when they try to pull the reports, then they were like.
Ferg, I'll give you a, a, a prime example, and we're going to change this, we're in communication to do it. Uh, the mobile home part, every man, mobile home part, there's, there, we're considering everything over, um, so I think it's a hundred and forty units, um, overage, where we shouldn't, that should be a base, so we're going to change that. So we're collecting, yes, we're collecting some, some, we're, we're showing that we're having.
Do you have overage for the whole car?
And we're going to re, restructure how we collect that.
Should top it up, we'll get it in there.
So, anyway, I mean, all of this to say, so that, and just to your point about, um, how much, how many gallons are included in your base rate, that didn't change in this proposal.
Right. I make the motion that we, uh, move ahead with this, uh, rate to cover expenses. Okay.
More discussion?
My only other question is, just because I don't have it in front of me, is how much did we raise it last year? Three percent seems a lot.
We, well.
It, we basically just do whatever we need to do to make it better, but.
It was, I think it was, it was up twenty dollars.
So if it was.
Could you refer, Casey, what we, what the increase was last year?
Um, well, let's see, last year, the, um, year went up ten dollars and the residential went up twelve dollars last year too. And it's going up twelve dollars again this year.
So it's about the same.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. Which makes sense because.
The last year, I'm at two twenty-two, two thirty-four, and now it's going from two thirty-four to four sixty.
Can we increase the institution or, 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 uh, taxes? Yes, and then, you know what they'll do, they'll just jack up the education taxes. Then we go, then we go with the budget now. That's why I'm here to pay Paul.
Yes, it just depends what Paul people want to pay us.
That's why, that's why I'm joking.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, do we have more discussion? You ready for that?
All right, ready, so, Karen.
All, all in favor of approving this, uh, water revenue rates, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you, Casey, on the sewer.
Yep.
You know.
It's basically the same.
Same concept, really, um.
So I made the motion that.
A little bit more because sewer is more costly to operate, so can you see the sewer on your screen right now?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, okay, so the overall expenses in the sewer is the five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, so obviously it's kind of a bit more to operate this. Um, last year, residential went up quite a bit, it went from four sixty-two to five twenty-two, so that was, what, thirty-eight? It was like fifty dollars, fifty, sixty, yeah, sixty dollars. This year, we're looking at a thirty-four dollar increase annually, which is about seven percent. And we're also going to raise the overage from point zero one eight to point zero one nine five. Um, and I looked at what we did for gallons last year, and what we thought were new revenue. Um, so we're looking at about thirty-four dollars for, you know, typical residential.
So this, I just, this, both of these budgets do put a little more weight onto the overage, I think, which is something that I think is reasonable, because I think that's where more paper is, yeah.
But like, we're meeting our overage goals, like, so in fiscal year twenty-five, um, we, we hope to collect, if you look up above, we had budgeted to collect a hundred and sixty-five in usage, but actually did a hundred and seventy-nine. So the usage was, I mean, is working, so, you know, even if we don't quite land with that many overage gallons, we should be close to the revenue, um, so it looks like, you know, we're meeting the, the budget for usage, at least we did last year, so.
Casey, could you?
Assuming that it stays pretty steady.
Could you just re-explain it, I'm sorry if I missed it, the, so we've got, so under the quarterly allocations, we've got the commercial low users at eight thousand, and then the commercial slash residential at twenty thousand, um, oh, no, sorry. Nope, I just answered my other question. We keep the, no matter if it's commercial or residential, we just keep the amount the same for those two categories, the annual rates. Because it's just based on their.
The number of gallons?
They're the same because they're both in a thousand dollar base.
Okay, great.
I make a motion to approve the sewer rates for fiscal year twenty-six. Yeah, motion and a second, do we have more discussion? All in favor of the stay out?
Bye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you, Casey.
I appreciate, your internet's really good.
I appreciate all your work on, uh, getting the, getting the data straightened out, so you, you're more confident in these numbers.
All right, you guys, something I am, I'm going to go close my ticket.
All right, good night.
Good night, bye.
Night. Uh, okay, next is I, for, select board to review and consider approving an MOU between, amendment of understanding between the town and the Harburg Downtown Partnership for ongoing support of the organization's goals. And it did review it, um, is this similar or the same as the ones you have had?
It's relatively similar, I guess we're going to do this every year, that's kind of how it works.
Oh, so it's just a one year?
They go year to year, yeah, and I, I was a little behind this year because we didn't have a staff person paying attention to it. So, um, yeah, next year we'll be back on track, as it goes with the fiscal, it's supposed to go with the fiscal year instead of now, but.
So can I give the Cliff Notes version as I read it, and you can correct me?
Yeah, there's really, there, it's, there is only one difference in the last one, and it is the, um, the, uh, where is it, number under organization?
Number nine.
Number nine under organization, which is, um, considering establishing the local option tax and allocating the conservative five percent of the overall tax revenue to HDP for support of our efforts in economic development and scope of services. of the overall tax of revenue to HDP for support of our efforts in economic development and scope of services. It's, it was part of our, uh, part of our application for downtown designation, it was in there as well, so.
Is that also mentioned in our town plan?
To consider a local.
Consider a local option tax?
I couldn't tell you.
I don't, I don't know.
I gotta check.
So then the other, the only other, um, request, the only other funding is what we've been doing, right, which is, um, amount of fifteen hundred dollars a year, which is pretty minimal.
Yeah.
And otherwise, it says that the downtown.
You can up that if you want.
I know, we can, the otherwise, it says the downtown, um, commission, the Hardwick Downtown Partnership, continue doing what it's been doing, promoting the downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And all the Main Street four points, all the different categories. Yep.
Uh, people, what's your pleasure? Does anybody want, anybody making discussion? Anybody wanna make a motion?
Uh, yeah, sorry, just, I can motion to approve the MOU between the town and the Hardwick Downtown Partnership for ongoing support of the organization's goals.
Great. We have a second?
I don't feel like I can second it because I'm abstaining, you know?
Well. I'll second it.
If there are no questions.
Oh, yeah, I'm.
I'll second it to get it moving.
Okay. Curious of Danny's thoughts on this.
So, do you have any discussion, or?
I don't like number nine with the allocating overall tax revenue.
That was, that was also.
It just says consider, it does not say.
Don't need to say that, don't need to be in there.
Uh, well, it used to be, prior to, uh, legislation in the last year, it used to be that you couldn't even get a local option tax if you were designated downtown. What do you mean? Mcville, Mcville, uh, participates in Hardwick Town, just like every other part of Hardwick, the economic development success of downtown Hardwick affects everybody.
Right. I would agree, but I'm just saying, I don't believe we should say that we're gonna consider allocating direct percentage of tax revenue to this project, I don't believe that should be in there, so.
To the organization.
Anything?
Well, I guess, when we say consider, it's like, is that, do we decide that late, later, what's, what's?
Time and time again, it's been proved to me that consider means obligate to a lot of people, they don't understand the differences. So, I, you guys do whatever you wanna do, we don't have to.
I'm, I'm, I'm genuinely seeking to understand here, because I had the same concern, that's why I didn't say anything.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, and so I'm listening, so don't, you know, immediately jump on that horse, easy, and, but it's, but so then, like, what do you, how do we go about that? Do we remove that, do we say?
I think more than five percent of the businesses in the downtown would be contributing, or would be bringing in that local option tax. So the business.
So the local option tax, I don't have a problem.
Yeah.
That's, that's entirely different than five percent of the overall tax revenue.
Okay, so I misunderstood at the beginning, so you don't, you don't mind the part about?
No, I'm the one that brought up, I brought up the local option.
Right, so you don't mind the part that says we should consider it?
That's right, that, that directly affects the downtown people that are selling things.
Yeah.
And making the economic.
They're generating, they're generating.
They're generating it, and they're also causing, my whole point, my speech before was, generating revenue costs money.
Yeah, yeah.
So, for me to live in Mcville and have to pay to generate money, people in downtown are making money, it's a business.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, it does help everyone in town, and that's the whole idea, but the business that all Mcville does as well, Mcville Road, they're not gonna benefit from five percent, I'm not giving five percent of my overall tax revenue.
No, no, it's not five percent of your overall tax.
It's the local option tax.
Okay, let me explain it, I think, just so it's clear, if the town were to receive a hundred percent of a certain allocation of local option tax, okay, the downtown partnership would get five percent of that out, of the hundred percent allocation. So it's not five percent.
Of the total tax.
Of the total tax.
So you're saying, like, if the, if the local option tax generates a hundred bucks?
But only five percent.
Let's use a hundred thousand dollars.
So, so, let's use, let's say, oh yeah, a hundred thousand.
Yes.
So, where you use the example where the local option tax generates a hundred thousand dollars, that seems really high.
No.
No? Okay, so it generates a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Just the local option tax.
Yes, the Hardwick downtown.
We would consider saying that the Hardwick Downtown Partnership would get five thousand.
Would be entitled to five thousand.
But we consider it, so we're not obligating it right now, we're not saying they're getting it right now, we're.
Right, I understand, consider, I don't.
No, no, I didn't.
And then, and then I think there's.
Deliberately dated.
We gotta use meditation.
I guess I just wanted to also distinguish between the downtown.
So that's different than my, you know, the original overall tax revenue, it says.
Oh, oh, oh.
So that's just poorly worded maybe, but it's about, all about the local option tax, it's not about the.
That is considerably different than.
I, I agree, that is, that is.
I did not catch that it said overall tax.
I just took it from what Heather had written in our application, so.
So I have no problem with giving a bigger percentage to the downtown partnership of the option tax, because they go, but it's different, guys.
So it just means we word it differently.
You don't laugh at me, you go.
It just, it just means we word it differently, I just took it from what Heather had written.
Don't really matter, just play it out, don't pay attention to it.
Danny, I agree with you, don't throw me under the bus.
Read a lot, we're dream things.
No, you're absolutely right.
Yeah. That makes sense, that's what we're saying.
I think we're all tracking that, you're, you caught something.
Oh my god, I did good.
Danny, Danny.
So, yeah, I have no problem with, in fact, that's why I brought the whole thing up, with generating revenue for downtown.
So, can we, can we, can we have a motion to amend, uh, item nine, and take the word overall, and change it to local option?
Yeah.
Overall tax revenue of the local option.
No, no, just replace overall with local option.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
Right. It's like it is in, at the beginning.
Yes.
It, it may be right, but it's, that's open to interpretation, for sure.
I would also just get rid of conservative five percent and say allocate a portion, and then we can decide that later.
I would too, because it, it could be much more, again, it's much different downtown benefiting from what downtown's generating.
So for, for the minutes, for the minutes, what are, what are we amending it to exactly?
Amending to consider establishing a local option tax and allocate a portion of that local option revenue to HDP to con, to support continued efforts, so we're allocating a portion of that.
A second, the amendment.
So we're, we're replacing a conservative five percent with a portion, that's it?
A portion of.
And of, of the local option tax.
Of the overall tax revenue.
No, not, not overall tax.
Local option tax revenue.
It was that one word, strike overall, and replace that with local option.
Well, I was, uh, I was gonna hold it in rows.
No, you're reading the words that were written.
See, Danny, now everyone's out to get you.
Hey, by the way, my taxes pay for, uh, bond use to pay Mcville, so I'm paying for your smooth row.
You got screwed.
Um, so, hang on, so I just want, so we have a motion to amend, we have a, yeah, a motion to amend the original motion, we have a second to amend the original, to change that language, any more discussion on that motion? No. All in favor of the, of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So that, the motion.
Abstaining as well.
Abstaining, and the, the, so the, uh, motion is now amended.
Yeah.
To approve this MOU with that change to item nine, and so.
And we had a motion in the second, right?
We did, we already did, so any more discussion on the original motion to, to pass the MOU? All in favor of approving the MOU as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Took us a minute.
And, and.
Abstaining.
I was rattled.
Thank you, thank you.
That was a good learning, that was a good.
You were reading, that's what I, I kinda just skimmed that, and then didn't catch it.
Not once have I thought that your participation here was invalid, okay, I just wanted you to know.
Aye.
Uh, maybe not, one, maybe one time.
Well, that probably didn't make sense to me, that's why I'm like, it does make no sense.
I just.
Whatever, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, you gotta read them carefully.
So, good, good work, good work, Jerry.
Thank you.
Next. Uh, item five, select board to review and consider approving a firm for the gravel pit blasting, and I believe we got two quotes?
Yeah.
Big boom, little boom.
Can I explain?
I'd like, I'd like all my.
Only got this my whole life, and I didn't, but, but explain anything.
So this is for five thousand cubic yards of rock.
Yes, yeah.
Um.
Okay.
I take in the five thousand, um, and I, the, on the Kingdom gravel, um, I added the mobilization fee into the cost per cubic yard, um.
So.
The total for Capital Rock is twenty-nine thousand nine hundred, the total for Kingdom gravel is twenty-nine thousand three hundred.
Yeah, I thought they'd be close.
Yeah.
So what, what is all of the?
So.
A Kingdom's figuring here, I'm not, I've never seen it written like that.
If they do an eight by eight pattern.
Yeah, it's like, oh.
And if they do an eight by nine pattern, and then the under twenty-five feet is if they have, if they're, if they can't drill twenty-five feet.
Right.
They need, they wanna drill twenty-five feet.
Yes, correct.
So if they can't, they're gonna charge us more.
Because they gotta go bigger.
Yeah.
More yard, of the cubic yardage.
And last time, we did about fifty-five hundred cubic yards.
The only thing I ask you is, who's gonna crush it?
Um, it's gonna be on the ground until the spring, likely Kingdom.
But Capital doesn't crush.
No, we're likely, will likely have Kingdom come in and crush it when they come in and crush.
Well, who's crushing, who's crushing this in the next few weeks, because honestly, somebody's starting.
Kingdom.
Yeah, Kingdoms and Capital doesn't crush, always do the little blast.
They're just coming in to blast.
So I mean.
And that's the data last, last year.
Wait, who did? Capital did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're both, they're both reputable, I mean, it's not.
I mean, I'd prefer to stick with the local option.
Austin Powder is the one doing the blasting, we tried to get them blasting.
Austin Powder?
Austin Powder is being subcontracted by Kingdom Gravel.
Yeah, they don't drill blast.
Oh. And you tried to get them.
But they do crush.
They're coming in for Kingdom, they're actually the ones doing the blasting.
So they know.
Yeah.
So, all right, so the thing to me, when I look at this, the cost, we have two bids to do the, to the cubic yardage that we want, the cost is essentially the same, it's within six hundred dollars difference.
And I recommend Kingdom Gravel, due to the fact that they have come, done the crushing for us, they've worked with us on making the rock that we wanted them to make, and.
Yeah.
They're, they're the more local one.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we go Kingdom Gravel.
Vermont.
For where Opie said the price was.
Second.
Not authorize Opie to do what he's gonna do to make rock, get the small rock, big rock and the small rock, Opie.
Uh, all right, so, we got a motion and a second to approve the bid from Kingdom Gravel on aggregate, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Um, where are we, item six, um, we have, uh, some late entry bids for.
A bid for the trailhead.
For planting the trailhead kiosks or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the, the bid was for forty-seven hundred and forty dollars, that's the only bid that we got.
From?
For doing, from gravel construction.
And what are they doing, what are they doing?
They're gonna do the oz place.
But what, like, what's the, what are they, they're?
They're planting trails, do his kiosk.
The kiosk, and then at the trailhead location by the depot, they're gonna be making a stay mat ADA pad, um.
And putting up the kiosk.
For, yes. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, they actually have to do stay mat around both, we have a, what they call a mini kiosk for this little oz place, and there has to be stay mat around both the, for ADA requirements, but it's a bigger pad down by the depot, because that's gonna be our main, um, drill.
Trailhead.
So they'll be laying their stay mat.
Within budget.
And finally, putting up the kiosk that we've had in storage for.
Finally. Getting them out of Tom's way.
I think third time's the charm, Danny.
Is that bid within the budget?
What?
Is that bid within the budget for the grant?
For the what?
The grant.
There's no grant.
Oh, there's no grant.
The grant provided the kiosks.
The grant provided all.
So where's this money?
Centuries.
This money is spent because our town road crew doesn't have time to do this work.
So we should, so we should then, what's the timing, like, other than weather, is there like a time crunch on it, or we just got the bid today?
I, I can speak to that a little bit, so one of the reasons we, we wanted to do this now is because the Historical Society has a project where they're gonna, I think I talked about this before, they're gonna raise up those rails, because the ties are all routed, replace the ties, uh, I think they're gonna need a little more material for the ties as well, and Gravel is the first, is, happens to be also the company that's doing that work, so we did invite other firms, which is easily one that's submitted, so this, in some ways, it'll be easier because he's doing that project to, we're gonna probably have to close the trail and reroute people briefly, so it would be easier to do it all at one time, that's a little piece of, thought, um, so we could do the trailhead work, and they could be doing the, he can also be doing the rail work at the same time, um, it is a little, it's gonna be a little tight because we have to, before we can actually have him do the trailhead work, I have to go through some process with the trans, so we have to get a start date, once we have a start date, we have to apply for permission to basically do this work, especially if we're gonna close the trail, so there's still, I don't know, I'm hoping we could get all that done fast enough to get the work done before it all.
But it'll be longer than two weeks, I guess my question is, I would prefer to have it be an actual agenda item, to see that bid, and then also see where the money would be coming from specifically in the budget, before making a decision.
That's, that's about my opinion, great.
No, no, I know, I just.
How much is it?
It's forty-seven hundred dollars.
It's under five thousand dollars, which technically.
The town manager can decide.
Can spend. I mean.
Yeah, you're right.
You know, we've been waiting to do this for two years.
But it's just, it's, I agree that we've been waiting for a really long time, it's, we just didn't have anything in the board folder about it, and we didn't see where the money's coming from, so, like, when there's an add-on like this, it's just hard to.
I would like to say that, I, I believe we committed to spending some money, so the Historical Society donated money toward getting those to meet, to match the grants, to get the kiosks, and the signs, and the garbage cans, and the, all the stuff that's in there.
Solid waste district grant.
Money to that, the Downtown Partnership contributed money to that, I just feel like, you know, the, I don't know.
I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to, to do it.
Second.
To do what?
Allocate. To allocate the money.
Get the, to accept the bid and get it going.
Accept the bid, allocate the money.
Second.
So, I'll be glad to see those finally planted.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, and then we can, then we can stop arguing about it.
Yeah.
Well, and then, we, yeah.
Good job.
Get it all out of.
I'm really, I'm just kidding, then we can have a beautiful kiosk, which will be also really cool.
And I will tell you, that, the rail trail and the area in Hardwick here, and downtown is bustling with bikers, it's a beautiful thing.
Yeah, even without the sherits and the trailheads and all that stuff.
Yeah, just think how great it's gonna be, it's all done.
Tell us how Mobile Plows will do it.
I have, I have absolutely zero problem with that, and I think we should totally have the kiosks, and I love it, I don't love having it be an add-on at a meeting without the information.
Got it.
That's my opposition to it, it has nothing to do with the kiosk.
Based on the, the conversation we had at the beginning of the meeting with the public?
She said that's made too wrong.
I, I, I think you're, that's, that's solid.
So, but that's, I think, I think we need to do it, but, um, that's just my.
Um, so, all right, we have a motion and a second, do we have more discussions? All in favor of, uh, approving the town manager to engage with gravel construction, get those kiosks planted, um, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
No.
Motion carries, thank you, everyone, um, next is select board reports.
So we have trees going up, from the, from the community tree planting, yeah, well, I don't know if everybody noticed, you know?
Nobody's ever seen a tree before?
Eric had not noticed where they were.
Yeah, no.
And they're all in, all over the place, they are identified with the sign.
No, I mean like, a post on somewhere saying, um, three, two, three, I don't know, have they been?
There are signs in front of each tree telling what species and that it, that it's coming from this grant.
We made them even.
Tree, the, the, there's already.
I'll put the wood map on my work.
Okay, there we go.
Do you have coordinates too?
No, I'm gonna have to buy, get a bus and do tours.
As an additional report, the townhouse, we had a board meeting, and we had a training on our new accessible lift to the stage. So, we're very close to that, and talked a little bit about planning for a town meeting, so I don't know that we have done anything since. We talked about doing something about pre-planning for town meeting, but it's coming.
Okay.
I happened to have seen Rose right after that meeting where we talked about town meeting, because she expressed some interest, and so she and I talked a little bit, and it sounds like there's, like, conversations with her and a couple people in Ores, and so I encouraged her to talk to us.
All right, excuse me.
Like, having some people in line for moderator. Um. One other quick, kind of an add-on to Sherry, is that, um, spent a lot of time in town this week. I bumped into Jackie from V-Trans, who is doing the signage inventory on the rail trail system. And talked to her a little bit about that rail trail crossing, because it's a little bit tricky, there's like some vegetation that I talked to her about.
When you said that rail.
Oh, sorry, sorry, the right, by, by Coomer Road, the rail trail crossing that, that.
North Main Street.
North Main Street. Because I had observed some pedestrians not stopping, some, like, some car, anyway, and I got some questions about like, why isn't there a cross?
There would be crossing on the rail trail.
Totally, but anyway, she, I talked about it, I talked to her a little bit about it, and she said that, she agreed with me, and she was like, yes, we can get some of this foliage cut back, which I think would be really helpful, so there's more sight for people crossing from there to there, and then, um, she also talked about, um, just generally, like, talking to the town about maybe adding some other sites further up, so that drivers can see before, like, the trail.
I bet we put some signs up on the rail trail, suggestion to the users, a little bit of etiquette about stopping back ten feet and not riding right up to the white line and
Yeah.
jumping out of the road, causing death to people.
We talked about that as well, because, uh, so I also witnessed a family, like, come up, see the stop sign, but not really stop, and then like have to stop. So, she talked about getting a sign that's made back by the depot that says, like, stop sign ahead, traffic will not stop. So, you know, something physical, ways, cannot just educate, anyway, I just wanted to mention that, and I talked to her a little bit about it. And I don't know if it's new business or old business, but, um, David O'Brien is here to talk a little bit about some of the equity committee work, and I was gonna talk a little bit about it, but I can wait for new and old business, if somebody has other.
Other reports, old business, old business?
Uh, I wanted to ask where we're at in the hiring process of the Public Works Director.
Great question.
We haven't hired anybody, we don't have a candidate.
Okay.
My application was rejected.
Okay.
Well, as it should be.
We shouldn't, we can't talk about the HR process, about our interview, Dan.
Mine was pretty short.
We didn't cut it short.
I had some pretty, he said, no.
So, are we posting, or what are you thinking?
Uh, I'm thinking that we kind of look at the job description again, we were asking a lot.
It's big job, that's a big job description.
And then, um, also.
We need a lot.
Wanting to have a conversation with, I've been having several conversations with Sarah from HED, and they're going through a restructuring, and we're talking about potentially, um, they're looking at somebody to do project management as well, so. I didn't wanna jump too far ahead, but.
There might be, might be something there to share a position.
Right.
So. If, I, I agree, I said this in the beginning, that your job description was not in line with what you really need.
Right.
Or what you really want, and that, that's, that's been the case all along, and I agree. Which, I think you need to take a quick stab at a, a job description that would satisfy what OPD's on the ground. And I think that job description would be more aligned with one of our candidates we had. Who wasn't the right candidate, but the, the qualifications, I think, were in line with one candidate much more than they were with the other. One of those girls, she wasn't qualified for what you need, but qualified for the job description. The gentleman that was so experienced, he could do a lot of stuff in that job description, he'd have, he'd done it. I don't know if you need all that, and I said that from the beginning, you have a, a Public Works Director job description, and you need a project manager, I said that.
So, you, so, it sounds like you're already thinking that way, retooling that description.
Right.
Okay.
And, and.
Which is a good answer.
Potentially a shared position, potentially.
Yeah, either way, I think it's more in line with what you, you want, not what I think we need, but it's more in line with what you want, and it's your job, and you, you need what you need to do your job. That's the bottom line, Hopey, so.
So, that's where we're at, yeah?
So, that's.
Got it.
Sorry.
That sounds promising, it'll, I mean.
Well, we'll talk about it more.
It's still, it's still.
Right, not even that part of it, it's promising to me that it was recognized that we did make a foolish decision by hiring someone that
Yeah.
wasn't, wouldn't, may not have been the perfect candidate based on the fact that we hadn't really figured out what the perfect candidate was.
There's also.
I think we, I think Hopey, not speaking for him, but in him and I talking, I think he has a much better understanding of what he wants now, after poking a few candidates and seeing what's out there.
We, we also have, um, I don't wanna hire somebody for the sake of hiring somebody, and we also have, uh, there's a sunset of these female projects, and we're gonna have a position.
With no jobs.
When, with potentially not a, a huge workload.
We are so bunk-hung right now on grant stuff that that's not gonna last forever, because the money is drying up.
Yes, it is.
And the economic climate is changing in a hurry, so.
Yeah, things are gonna be.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, well, it's good work, Hopey.
Okay, here's back to you.
Yeah, I think this can be pretty quick, we know it's already seven forty-five, so we, um, I've brought this up before, but, um, the Equity Committee is in the process of our big project, which is bringing a lot of different organizations together to think about equity, to think about what, who they're serving, how they could be serving a more diverse group of people, how they could be collaborating, all kinds of different things. Um, right now, so we've had two meetings, our next meeting is coming up in October, and we've tasked each kind of group or organization with, um, thinking about dreaming and what an equitable community looks like, David, please jump in if I say something wrong. The town is one of those organizations that's participating in this. Um, and so, Hopey and Tracy have been at the meetings, Kristen's been at the meetings, Alberta was at a meeting, um, and I know that they've been talking about it in their staff meetings, but the, but I wanted to bring it up to the select board, I don't think we should really talk about it right now, because it's seven forty, seven forty-five. But I do think that a part of the dream phase for the town organization is not just the town staff, it includes the select board, and it includes other departments of the town too. So, I wanted to bring it up. I have not been like a part of the staff conversations, um, but I think it's a good practice, especially when we're, uh, especially when we're doing things like a town garage, and like we have some, or even a new septic system, we have some bigger infrastructure projects that will affect a lot of people to be, um, to be thinking about making sure that those are applicable.
Thank you.
Great. I think our water reached.
She speaks well for me.
She speaks better.
Yeah.
I have three chocolate chip cookies, so I'm about to crash.
So, any other new business, old business or reports? I'll just say quickly, I've seen a lot more people stopping at Memorial Park lately.
Yeah.
And I think with the rail trail coming through there, people see it now.
Right.
And they go over there, and they see him sitting on those benches and looking at the memorials and.
Was that the sons of the American Legion that cleaned up that area?
So, actually, that's, thank you for bringing that up, so.
Somebody was working on the fountain today.
Yeah, they were, they're repointing the fountain, and the, the Suns and the Auxiliary and the Legion, the three organizations under the Legion are, have committed to, the flower garden approach, um, and the Dodgers.
Instead of the fountain?
Yep, the Dodgers of the American Revolution are gonna do that, the planting and the maintenance of the garden, so, um, they are repointing it. The, the son of the, the mason that built the fountain or the flower garden, um, I learned a lot of history about this, that structure.
So, it was a flower garden first?
Yeah.
And it was planted with tulips.
Yep.
The tulip festival, I, I learned a lot about the tulip festival and how great it was, and how there were tulips everywhere in Hardwick, and I hope to see those again. And that's what's going on, so.
Great.
I do agree with you, the park is very busy.
Yeah, I see people in it, and I go through and out.
That's good.
And Dennis Padva, um, has trimmed the bushes twice, uh, once in the spring, once in the fall, I think they look really great, doing a good job, and.
Yeah, they, they cleaned up by the rail trail too, right?
They, they also cleaned up, and they're gonna beautify that a little bit.
It's nice.
So, it'll, our kiosk at the pos place, which is gonna just add to the, um, add to the appeal.
Right by our new town, our, our town garage.
Then we can put a toll booth up there.
Hey, now we're talking.
As long as the Downtown Partnership gets five percent of those.
It gets five percent as long as they stack it.
Ooh, all right, I'll give you ten for that.
All right, you guys, uh, the last thing is to adjourn, so we're gonna adjourn.
Hey, great meeting tonight.